This is the original site plan that was submitted and presented last time. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an automotive sales dealership to be, to conduct business on less than an acre of their property. So the site plan, details, not too much. Along the right-hand side, there's the property line. And it looks like along the north side, the northeast side, there's the entrance. The board asked for something that was a little bit clearer. So this is a rough sketch of the site plan. The 240 feet by 180 feet dimensions are outlined there in the black dotted line. And here is our close-up, which is not to scale. So again, the applicant intends to have a small 12 by 20 building as an office. That's located in the lower southeast corner, indicated in green. Again, it's 12 by 20. The area in front and probably along the side would be used for customer parking. The vehicles for sale would be displayed around the car lot area, which is again, in the dotted black line. The blue line along the right-hand side indicates the 10-foot building setback line that the applicant would not be able to place a building within. The board asked how many vehicles the applicant would have for sale. The applicant said that they would start small. So there would be maybe a dozen or two dozen cars at first. The board had also asked about a restroom. Since the applicant did not plan on having those facilities in their office, the applicant stated that they would use the facilities at the house on the property. The board also wondered at that time if there were any regulations within the county that stated the commercial entity also had to be owner occupied or if the area, or if the area could even be leased. The applicants and the property owner, again, are not the same entity. On the left side of the screen is a statement from the property owner, Mr. Castillo, stating that he agrees to lease the area to Mr. Sosa, who's the applicant. We did not find any supporting code within the county that stated that the commercial entity had to be owner occupied, meaning they had to be the same as the property owner. We found this true in other projects that have come before the board, such as cell towers. Usually it's the leasing, i.e. the cell tower company or the company representing the cell tower that comes for the board asking for a conditional use permit. Also in the past, within the last five years, there are a handful of small businesses that have requested CUPs to applicants have not been the property owner. If there are questions, issues with the business, who's responsible? Ultimately, that is the property owner's responsibility to ensure that the person they're leasing to, you know, maintains the business area being leased. And I hope that answers some of your questions from last time. Native notifications. Property owners within 300 feet of the project parcel were sent notifications. Staff did not receive any comments from the last time we met, we did a mailing. But this time when we did receive one, the property owner along the southeast side stated that they were concerned about erosion on their property from water runoff from Mr. Castillo's property. And they stated that the applicants may have to use field dirt to level the property. And if so, that would potentially allow more water to run off onto their property. If their property was harmed because of this, who would be responsible? So these are the most current images of the area that's the automotive dealership would be in. So this image here is taken, taken near the driveway entrance to the residence that is on the property. And here is where the actual car lot would be itself. If you would just note the location of the white building. The blue arrow in the lower right-hand side of the screen indicates that where that white building is to give the board and anybody else watching an idea of, you know, dimensions and where the car lot would be on this screen versus this screen. So item six of the Washington County CUP submitted checklist requires the applicant to submit a drainage statement. The applicant's statement said that they did not expect any runoff to be injurious to nearby neighbors. The engineer whom reviewed the project has asked for a full drainage report showing pre and post calculations. A final approval of this project would be contingent upon the county engineer reviewing and approving this drainage report. And hopefully that would also help answer some of the questions from the adjoining property owner about runoff and whether or not it could potentially be injurious to their property. So staff has reviewed the CUP supplemental documents and feels that the proposed car sales lot can be made compatible with county ordinances with the following conditions that are on the screen. These conditions have not been updated since the time of your staff reports. Are there any questions?
Ceta, I've got a couple.
Yes.
On that new design that he put there, there's like a 25-foot driveway that's separate from the entrance that comes into the housing. Has he obtained approval from the highway department for that driveway?
He has not. That's why there are no dimensions besides 24 feet in width, because that's what he specifically wrote on his, in his letter and on his site plan. Those dimensions and everything else would be up to ultimately the state highway department to, to impose.
Okay. And then the other one was, so basically the, the only gravel there is going to be in front of that office building that they put there. And I'm assuming-
I'm understanding it's for sure the gravel area, but there is potential for gravel over the entire area if he has to level it out a lot. And that I do not know.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, here are none. We'll take it. Anybody for a public comment, Nathan?
We do have someone here at the courthouse.
Okay.
Like to comment.
Nathan, y'all taking care of that for them to comment?
We are actually in the planning office. Juliana is up at the courthouse and she's got Bob up there and that person from the, from the public. Julie, does it, does it seem like that person from the public wants to make a comment on this project? There are no hands raised, Mr. Chair. So once Juliana is able to touch bases with that person in the audience.
Okay, because I can't, is she muted? I can't tell.
She's muted right now.
I hate to move on without giving her an opportunity to let us know.
IT is working with her.
Okay, but she does want to speak on this particular project. Juliana?
Yes. My mic? Yeah. That might need to be turned down so that it doesn't echo.
Yeah, I should reach. My name is Brenda Jennings and I was the one that wrote the, the letter.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add or?
Is it?
Yes.
Are we okay?
Yes.
No, I was just very concerned about the runoff. The pictures that were shown kind of makes it look more level than it is. That land is really not all that level. And I've already had a lot of my property ruined by the people next door to them that's holding field dirt and was promised that no damage be done to my property. So I just wanted to know if something, if it does cause damage to my property, what's my obligations or who's responsible for it?
Nathan, is the county attorney on and want to address that?
Mr. Lester is on, but I think Ceta could easily address that one.
All right, Ceta.
I give Ceta the key.
Okay.
Go first.
All right, I meet myself. It does say in the Washington County Code that we are not supposed to, I say we generally, not we as in myself or we as in us, but we are not supposed to shed water upon our neighbors in an injurious manner. If runoff from Mr. Castillo's property does injure Ms. Jennings's property, that would be something that the planning would, planning would look at to see if it was due to this project. And if it was to do this project, then we would ask the applicant to make it right. Otherwise, and then that's where this, the drainage study would come in handy. We would know, you know, if Mr. Sosa did gravel the entire thing, you know, potentially what would, you know, the, the water drainage be? And then if there is, you know, something that would be injurious to the neighbors, what does Mr. Sosa have to do to fix it? You know, would it be adding a pond or ditches or, you know, drainage pipes, culverts? I just really don't know about the drainage manual.
Yeah.
Let me just add to that, that, that one of the conditions of approval is that the applicant provide a full drainage study in order for our county engineer to go over. And our county engineer would then require, and his requirements become our requirements, but they would, he would evaluate the pre versus post stormwater runoff. And then if there's any discrepancies there, then he would require detention pond or, or other sorts of stormwater measures. But we're not in the, in the habit of coming back after the fact for revisiting projects and having to come back and pick it up after the fact. We want to get all that done on the front end.
Yeah, if council's, if council's on the phone, I'd like for him to comment because I'm, I've never heard that before, that we would take on the role of mitigation post project. Okay, that's what Ceta said, that we would call them back. But if it's done, I mean, they, it's, the party is, the fault is the party will have to pay. So you may have to sue them, but you have rights to protect your property if you can prove that they've damaged you. But the county is not going to be adjudicating that for her.
Unless I've been wrong, unless I've been wrong for the last 15 years.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Nathan, say that again.
Ryan, would you have anything to add to that as far as the stormwater on the, the property?
Yeah, so water runoff, water is what we consider a common enemy in, in law, which basically means that, you know, we all suffer from it individually. If there is stormwater runoff, that can be, could be a nuisance and it certainly is a civil matter. And it would be between the two property owners and it would not be an issue for the county. Now, in issuing a conditional use permit, the county could, can put into place certain things to try to address a stormwater runoff. But ultimately, it becomes an issue regardless of what the county does. It's an issue between the two property owners.
And so that's why we try to get it taken care of on the front end because we know that taking care of it on the back end is, is, is very difficult.
Okay, ma'am, does that answer the question?
Yeah, that pretty much answered it.
Okay. Anything else?
No, just the runoff and damage to my property. But I mean, I don't understand about the bathroom situation. They said that they would use it in the house that's on that property. I don't think there is a house on that property. Unless it's in a, kind of an abandoned trailer house that's there.
Okay.
There you go. Can everyone see the house on the property there? It would be the owner's nephew, I believe. Is that right, Ceta? That, that would be the, the operator of the business?
Yes.
Presumably unless there's a family fight, then he could probably continue to-
Okay. Anything else?
No, I guess that would take care of it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Anybody else, Nathan?
I don't see anybody with their hands up, sir.
All right, then we'll bring it back to the commission. Do I have a motion or the other or?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the project as submitted, subject to staff comments.
Second. All right, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, passes. All right, moving right along. 62 Motor City CUP. Ceta, you're up again.
Okay, 62 Motor City CUP. I'm not sure what you're seeing on your screen, so I apologize if you're not seeing the full screen version. I have multiple monitors here at work, so, okay.
Yeah, we've got it, Ceta.
Okay. Um, so 62 Motor City, a conditional use permit request. This project is located along the western side of the county and is just west of the city of Lincoln, along the north side of State Highway 62. The location is not in any planning area. And here's a closer image of the subject property. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a commercial use in an area where the zoning is designated for agricultural and residential uses of one unit per acre. The property owner and the applicant are not the same person. The applicant is requesting to use the southern 100 by 100, southeastern, sorry, 100 by 100 feet as an auto sales dealership. The operating hours for this will be Mondays through Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There will be only one employee on site, which would be the applicant. The area will have an office along the northern portion of the proposed auto dealership area. There will not be any water or septic service to the building. The applicant states that they will utilize a restroom at a nearby friend's residence if the need arises. And should the business grow, the applicant will then consider having septic and water service installed. So the project parcel is outlined in red towards the middle of your screen. The parcels whose main use is agricultural are green. And the pink represents parcels that are primarily residential in use. And the blue, which there isn't a lot of, the blue represents commercial uses within the area. The dark red parcels are exempt from assessments. So the primary use within this project's parcel area is agricultural. The black dotted circle on the screen represents a half-mile buffer. So within half a mile, we only showed one other commercial entity, and this is a service center. Now, though our map did not show, show it's about 400 feet east of the service center is a small auto dealership, which is right here. And this is again, taken from Google Images. And this is also half a mile from the proposal on this screen here. If we go back to that half-mile buffer screen, there's a blue arrow and that's where the other auto dealership is. The immediate adjacent parcels do not contain any type of residential buildings. The nearest residence, however, is 200, approximately 269 feet away from the 100 by 100. The next closest is around 688 feet away. And to assist with safety, the applicant has stated they will install a fence all around the property. They will also landscape to help with the visual appeal of the business. Property owners within 300 feet of the project parcel were notified of the proposal. And to date, staff hasn't received any comments in favor or opposing the practice parcel or project in general. Staff has reviewed the CUP supplemental documents and feels that the proposed automotive car lot can be made compatible with county ordinances with the following conditions. And these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Hey, other than that little drawing they had, there's nothing else that they're required to do in, in reference to put that, I mean, it's, it seems to me kind of like the other one that it's a little bit half-put-together. You know, my concern is the, where they're putting it. And if you look further back on the property, and we didn't see pictures of east-west like y'all normally do other than the other car lots down through there, you know, I don't know. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, the, the question I have, are they going to screen the cars that are not in operation or for sale? That can be a little bit detrimental to, you know, the site, the vision of the facility. And I know they've got a bunch of vehicles there, the parts cars or whatever.
Yep.
Um, our screen conditions say that all outdoor storage areas and dumpsters, to include the gate, shall be screened with opaque material of the uniform type. It does not specifically say that, you know, if they have cars stored for parts, that that has to be screened, that we can make it a part of the conditions.
We can definitely add that condition at the meeting here, right here and now, if we would like to. We did that with the Orianna car lot a couple of months ago. And, but just a simple span of privacy fence might get what you're, what you're looking at there, Bob.
I think that would greatly help because I do know that, that that's going to be a practice there, probably.
I'm in agreements with Bob.
I agree as well.
We want to go ahead and, and basically mirror the, the condition that we used on the Orianna car lot. Something like that. We, we can just-
I'll make that-
To the, to the slide showing the, the property there, where we can see where the business and where the, the cars are. Thank you. Is that a home or more like a barn or?
It's a bunch of cars, looks like it to me.
Underneath the numbers right there, specifically underneath the 612 in that number, it looks like it's probably a barn.
It's a barn or a shed, whatever you want to call it.
What do you think? Maybe, do we want to kind of designate a certain length here on the spot, or do we just want to kind of indicate that we want screening effectively from corner to corner of the property? Not that the, that the span would go corner to corner, but from each corner, we would put the span long enough that from each corner, you wouldn't be able to see those cars.
I think you definitely do the west side and the north side if he's wanting, and, and he's going to do landscaping in order to make it presentable to, you know, as the business to be open and everything, I think he's definitely got to hide that.
Well, you know, it's, at this point, it's, it's a good conversation, but it ultimately, we're just going to need to come up with a condition there. And so were they proposing landscaping, Ceta?
Yes. He said he would put up landscaping to help with visual barriers, especially along here. And he's open to putting it wherever, you know, probably not the back, but you know, definitely along this eastern side, potentially.
Would the board be agreeable to vegetative screening? Or are we more interested in, in the privacy fence? In my opinion, vegetative screening would be more than adequate.
What I'm assuming is that along 62, he's probably going to display the vehicles that are for sale.
Yes.
I would say that screening needs to be done for the vehicles that he's using for parts or salvage or whatever. However they do it, some type of screening that would protect the residential people along that corridor there.
Did you say that you're more interested in just having screening rather than have, indicating the type of screening that you're interested in?
Right. It's something to block that view of those vehicles that are not in operation.
10-4. We will make that happen.
All right, anybody else got any comment? All right, any public comment, Nathan?
No, sir.
All right, then back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I may, we approve with the added stipulation that we presented.
There's, do I get a second?
Second.
All right, a motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
If I could just comment that it appears that we've got a sort of a runaway of used car lots here all of a sudden. But, you know, we might plan in advance because I hate to put it on staff or him to come up with reasonable, you know, what does screening look like? We, we probably should anticipate it when there's neighbors around it and you all go ahead and draw some stuff out. So we've got more concrete than just some screening, you know. So yeah, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Kind of a standard condition and maybe a standard screening type.
Yeah, for, as Bob says, for non-functioning cars or non-for-sale or, we need to come up with the definition. Everybody knows what he means, but we need to be able to define it clearly.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreements with Randy. I think something that gives them just a little bit more, that they got to put a little bit more effort than the, you know, I can't use a word my stepdad used, in reference to just kind of halfway doing it and just doing the least amount to throw something at us to say they want to, this is what I want to do. You know, something just maybe that, that y'all, that we require that gives it a little bit more concrete.
Yeah, and I'd like to know, are we, are we putting a $5,000 burden on them or a $2,000 burden? You know, I'd like to know that too, you know, I don't want to-
Well, and that's one of the big deals, understand that it's, it's, you know, we definitely do that whenever we're trying to-
Yeah.
Touch these people through the project and trying not to design it for them.
Yeah, and I'd like to know kind of what kind of a financial burden we're putting on them because I really don't know.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to land development hearing. Magnolia Acres Final Subdivision. Magnolia Acres Final Subdivision, Seda.
You're muted.
Okay. Okay, I have pressed the unmute button. The Magnolia Acres subdivision is located within the western half of the county, between the cities of Goshen, Fayetteville and Elkins. And it is not within any planning area. The project site is located on the south side of Lake Sequoia Road, Washington County 50. And here's a closer view of the subdivision. Magnolia Acres subdivisions came before the planning board on June 11th of this year, seeking preliminary approval. The members of the planning board present voted to approve the project. Magnolia Acres subdivision now appears before the board to seek their final approval. The subdivision consists of 10 lots total that are all over 10 acres in size. There is a residence within the developments that is not a part of the subdivision. This parcel is accessible by a 30-foot access easement within the southwestern boundary of Lot 5. There is a 16.41 acre remainder that, that the developers may utilize for future projects. That is also not a part of the subdivision. All the lots will be accessible from public county roads. There were, were no major issues during the preliminary phase of the project. All the items from the final subdivision center checklist have been fulfilled. The county engineer did not have any further comments in regards to the final drainage study. There were no comments or concerns from any of the utility providers when asked for their comments. The Department of Health has given their approval also for the subdivision. Here is the view from the northeastern corner of Lot 4. And the blue arrow is pointing to the other side of Lake Sequoia Road. This image kind of shows the majority of the developments. And this is from the other side of the subdivision. Looking back towards Lot 4. Again, during the preliminary, there were no comments from the public. It is standard procedure to not send notifications to surrounding property owners on final subdivision reviews. At this time, staff would like to recommend approval of the Magnolia Acres Final Subdivision. Oh, my goodness. Forgive the staff recommendation on the screen. It wasn't updated and that's my fault. Staff would like to recommend approval of the Magnolia Acres Final Subdivision with the following conditions. And these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report. Any questions?
Anybody have any comments from the board? All right, Nathan, anybody in the audience? Or online?
No, sir. No hands up.
All right, back to the board then.
I'll move it, excuse me, with the conditions of staff. Move approval.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, it passes. All right, Nathan, the other business.
I'll say, sir, no other business.
That's it, and everybody's got the reminders down there when the next meetings are, so no- All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
All right, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.